Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[355.12][355.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[358.12][358.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[361.12][361.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[364.12][364.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[367.12][367.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[370.12][370.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[373.12][373.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[376.12][376.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[379.12][379.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[382.12][382.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[385.12][385.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[388.12][388.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[391.12][391.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[394.12][394.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[397.12][397.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[400.12][400.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[403.12][403.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[406.12][406.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[409.12][409.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[412.12][412.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[415.12][415.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[418.12][418.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[421.12][421.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[424.12][424.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[427.12][427.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[430.12][430.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[433.12][433.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[436.12][436.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[439.12][439.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[442.12][442.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[445.12][445.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[448.12][448.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[451.12][451.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[454.12][454.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[457.12][457.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[460.12][460.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[463.12][463.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[466.12][466.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[469.12][469.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[472.12][472.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[475.12][475.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[478.12][478.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[481.12][481.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[484.12][484.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[487.12][487.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[490.12][490.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[493.12][493.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[496.12][496.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[499.12][499.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[502.12][502.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[505.12][505.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[508.12][508.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[511.12][511.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[514.12][514.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[517.12][517.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[520.12][520.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[523.12][523.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[526.12][526.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[529.12][529.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[532.12][532.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[535.12][535.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[538.12][538.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[541.12][541.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[544.12][544.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[547.12][547.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[550.12][550.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[553.12][553.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[556.12][556.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[559.12][559.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[562.12][562.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[565.12][565.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[568.12][568.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[571.12][571.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[574.12][574.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[577.12][577.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[580.12][580.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[583.12][583.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[586.12][586.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[589.12][589.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[592.12][592.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[595.12][595.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[598.12][598.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[601.12][601.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[604.12][604.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[607.12][607.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[610.12][610.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[613.12][613.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[619.12][619.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[622.12][622.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[625.12][625.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[628.12][628.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[631.12][631.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[634.12][634.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[637.12][637.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[640.12][640.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[643.12][643.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[646.12][646.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[649.12][649.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[652.12][652.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[655.12][655.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[658.12][658.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[661.12][661.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[664.12][664.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[667.12][667.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[670.12][670.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[673.12][673.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[676.12][676.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[679.12][679.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[682.12][682.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[685.12][685.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[688.12][688.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[691.12][691.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[694.12][694.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[697.12][697.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[700.12][700.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[703.12][703.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[706.12][706.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[709.12][709.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[712.12][712.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[715.12][715.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[718.12][718.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[721.12][721.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[724.12][724.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[727.12][727.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[730.12][730.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[733.12][733.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[736.12][736.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[739.12][739.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[742.12][742.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[745.12][745.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[748.12][748.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[751.12][751.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[754.12][754.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[757.12][757.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[760.12][760.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[763.12][763.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[766.12][766.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[769.12][769.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[772.12][772.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[775.12][775.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[778.12][778.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[781.12][781.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[784.12][784.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[787.12][787.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[790.12][790.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[793.12][793.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[796.12][796.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[799.12][799.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[802.12][802.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[805.12][805.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[808.12][808.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[811.12][811.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[814.12][814.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[817.12][817.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[820.12][820.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[823.12][823.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[826.12][826.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[829.12][829.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[832.12][832.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[835.12][835.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[838.12][838.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[841.12][841.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[844.12][844.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[847.12][847.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[850.12][850.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[853.12][853.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[856.12][856.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[859.12][859.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[862.12][862.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[865.12][865.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[868.12][868.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[871.12][871.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[874.12][874.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[877.12][877.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[880.12][880.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[883.12][883.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[886.12][886.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[889.12][889.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[892.12][892.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[895.12][895.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[898.12][898.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[901.12][901.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[904.12][904.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[907.12][907.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[910.12][910.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[913.12][913.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[916.12][916.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[919.12][919.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[922.12][922.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[925.12][925.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[928.12][928.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[931.12][931.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[934.12][934.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[937.12][937.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[940.12][940.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[943.12][943.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[946.12][946.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[949.12][949.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[952.12][952.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[955.12][955.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[958.12][958.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[961.12][961.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[964.12][964.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[967.12][967.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[970.12][970.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[973.12][973.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[976.12][976.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[979.12][979.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[982.12][982.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[985.12][985.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[988.12][988.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[991.12][991.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[994.12][994.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[997.12][997.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1000.12][1000.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1003.12][1003.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1006.12][1006.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1009.12][1009.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1012.12][1012.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1015.12][1015.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1018.12][1018.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1021.12][1021.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1024.12][1024.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1027.12][1027.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1030.12][1030.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1033.12][1033.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1036.12][1036.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1039.12][1039.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1042.12][1042.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1045.12][1045.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1048.12][1048.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1051.12][1051.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1054.12][1054.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1057.12][1057.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1060.12][1060.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1063.12][1063.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1066.12][1066.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1069.12][1069.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1072.12][1072.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1075.12][1075.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1078.12][1078.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1081.12][1081.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1084.12][1084.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1087.12][1087.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1090.12][1090.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1093.12][1093.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1096.12][1096.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1099.12][1099.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1102.12][1102.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1105.12][1105.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1108.12][1108.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1111.12][1111.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1114.12][1114.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1117.12][1117.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1120.12][1120.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1123.12][1123.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1126.12][1126.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1129.12][1129.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1132.12][1132.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1135.12][1135.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1138.12][1138.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1141.12][1141.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1144.12][1144.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1147.12][1147.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1150.12][1150.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1153.12][1153.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1156.12][1156.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1159.12][1159.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1162.12][1162.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1165.12][1165.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1168.12][1168.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1171.12][1171.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1174.12][1174.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1177.12][1177.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1180.12][1180.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1183.12][1183.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1186.12][1186.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1189.12][1189.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1192.12][1192.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1195.12][1195.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1198.12][1198.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1201.12][1201.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1204.12][1204.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1207.12][1207.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1210.12][1210.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1213.12][1213.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1216.12][1216.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1219.12][1219.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1222.12][1222.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1225.12][1225.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1228.12][1228.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1231.12][1231.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1234.12][1234.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1237.12][1237.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1240.12][1240.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1243.12][1243.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1246.12][1246.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1249.12][1249.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1252.12][1252.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1255.12][1255.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1258.12][1258.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1261.12][1261.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1264.12][1264.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1267.12][1267.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1270.12][1270.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1273.12][1273.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1276.12][1276.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1279.12][1279.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1282.12][1282.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1285.12][1285.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1288.12][1288.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1291.12][1291.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1294.12][1294.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1297.12][1297.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1300.12][1300.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1303.12][1303.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1306.12][1306.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1309.12][1309.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1312.12][1312.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1315.12][1315.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1318.12][1318.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1321.12][1321.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1324.12][1324.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1327.12][1327.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1330.12][1330.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1333.12][1333.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1336.12][1336.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1339.12][1339.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1342.12][1342.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1345.12][1345.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1348.12][1348.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1351.12][1351.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1354.12][1354.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1357.12][1357.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1360.12][1360.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1363.12][1363.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1366.12][1366.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1369.12][1369.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1372.12][1372.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1375.12][1375.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1378.12][1378.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1381.12][1381.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1384.12][1384.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1387.12][1387.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1390.12][1390.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1393.12][1393.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1396.12][1396.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1399.12][1399.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1402.12][1402.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1405.12][1405.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1408.12][1408.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1411.12][1411.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1414.12][1414.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1417.12][1417.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1420.12][1420.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1423.12][1423.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1426.12][1426.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1429.12][1429.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1432.12][1432.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1435.12][1435.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1438.12][1438.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1441.12][1441.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1444.12][1444.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1447.12][1447.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1450.12][1450.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1453.12][1453.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1456.12][1456.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1459.12][1459.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1462.12][1462.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1465.12][1465.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1468.12][1468.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1471.12][1471.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1474.12][1474.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1477.12][1477.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1480.12][1480.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1483.12][1483.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1486.12][1486.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1489.12][1489.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1492.12][1492.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1495.12][1495.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1498.12][1498.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1501.12][1501.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1504.12][1504.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1507.12][1507.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1510.12][1510.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1513.12][1513.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1516.12][1516.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1519.12][1519.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1522.12][1522.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1525.12][1525.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1528.12][1528.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1531.12][1531.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1534.12][1534.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1537.12][1537.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1540.12][1540.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1543.12][1543.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1546.12][1546.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1549.12][1549.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1552.12][1552.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1555.12][1555.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1558.12][1558.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1561.12][1561.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1564.12][1564.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1567.12][1567.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1570.12][1570.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1573.12][1573.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1576.12][1576.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1579.12][1579.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1582.12][1582.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1585.12][1585.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1588.12][1588.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1591.12][1591.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1594.12][1594.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1597.12][1597.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1600.12][1600.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1603.12][1603.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1606.12][1606.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1609.12][1609.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1612.12][1612.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1615.12][1615.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1618.12][1618.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1621.12][1621.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1624.12][1624.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1627.12][1627.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1630.12][1630.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1633.12][1633.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1636.12][1636.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1639.12][1639.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[1642.12][1642.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall.[1645.12][1645.12][S01. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 26, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we invite you to join us and participate in local government. For those of you unable to attend, council meetings can also be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brinson Galanter-Garcetti, Groll-Hahn, Holden-Lebonch, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, ten members present in the floor, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. This being Tuesday and the first meeting of the week, as is customary, we have a pledge of allegiance scheduled as well as a moment of inspiration to lead us in our salute to the flag. The council calls upon Sinclair Ridley-Thomas to the center podium, please. Please stand.
Would you please put your right hand over your heart? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And for an introduction of our special guest this morning, let me recognize Councilmember Cindy Misakowski.
Mr. President, we are awaiting Pastor John David Webster from Westchester Christian Church. I don't believe he has arrived yet, so I'll ask for an indulgence.
Okay, well, let's proceed with some initial items on today's agenda as we await his arrival. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas moves, and Mr. Brinson seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Misakowski moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number 20, request to continue that to December 10th.
Members' request to continue item number 20 for two weeks, I believe, to December 10th. Is there any objection to that? Is there any objection to that? Item number 20, seeing none. That matter shall be continued.
And also, a request from the city attorney to continue several of the closed-session items, 45B, 45D, and 45H, and those would all be continued to December 11th.
Members request to continue closed-session items. Without objection, so ordered. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, there is a confirmation of a city official on the agenda. It's a confirmation of Stan Sosa to El Pueblo, and that is an arts, health, and humanities report. Public hearing has been held in committee, however, there's only one signature on the file, so a motion is required.
Okay, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item, so we shall deem the public hearing once again satisfied. Is Mr. Sosa here? If you can come forward at this point. Members, we do have a committee report recommending approval of this commission nominee. Or come to the chair in front. Any members with additional questions or comments, not part of the committee report? Mr. Lebonch.
If I just could ask the prospective commissioners some of your visions of El Pueblo and the importance of the birthplace of the city.
Well, you know, much like insanity and sheer genius come together at a point, that's the old and the new, too. And my love for the old and the new, to be able to unite the historic with the fast-paced and growing Los Angeles is a great goal that I'd like to achieve. Besides the, maybe the obvious skills of management that one can impart on a commission like this, I believe that my love for L.A. is something that I would like to impose on a historic monument.
Great, well, thank you for your service. I always just want to put a plug in to get parking back on Main Street as much as possible. You create parking, that creates people, that creates activity, just like in Old Town, Pasadena, and other parts of the region, where they create parking in their older districts. I ask you to look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lebonch. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I know with the advent of the goal line, and the whole ocean-alameda district plan, then you have now this monument authority. And my hope would be that we do our best to preserve our history and our cultural elements, and the historic nature of this area. There was a time when a lot of the fast-food, big corporations wanted to come in and put up their monikers, their symbols, and personally, I felt that would take away from the authenticity of our history. And I would hope that we could maintain that. And with your leadership and guidance, knowing that you have been an activist for the city for many years in different areas, you must have a large hat rack, that we can continue down that path in preserving our history, and I just want to thank you for all your good work over the years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations, you are confirmed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service to the city.
Okay.
Forthwith on this matter, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings, excuse me, items noticed for public hearings. Items one through four are hearings protesting against street lighting districts. Council should open the public hearing and continue the hearing and the ordinance to December 17th.
Members, items one through four now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, so we shall deem the public hearings open, and without objection, continued to December 17th, three weeks from today. Next item.
Item number five is also a public hearing item. It's protest against super improvement, and council should open the hearing and continue that matter to December 11th.
Members, item number five now before us, and again, without request from members of the public to address the council on item number five, we shall deem the public hearing open and continued without objection to December 11th.
Next item is, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 26, with the exception of item number 20 that has already been acted upon.
Mr. President, point of information.
Mr. Brinson, followed by Mr. Reyes.
I noticed there are four items there that are listed under Information Technology Committee that apparently are mislabeled because they're clearly planning and land use management issues. So I wonder, I don't know whether the chairman had noticed that before or not, but nine, 10, 11, and 12, so I will call them special just for the purpose of...
Clarification.
Those are ordinances second consideration. So those are, the item number seven is separate, that's an ITGS committee report...
No, not seven, excuse me.
But eight, nine.
Nine, 10, 11, 12.
Those are all ordinances second consideration.
Yeah, but they're listed under Information Technology and General Services.
That's, those are separate items. Item seven is separate, it's an ITGS report. I know, but eight, nine, and 10 are second reading ordinances, so they're separate items.
So they should, they should not have been listed under the committee, right?
They're not listed under the committee.
They look like they are.
That's just, those are just, that's just the way the items came on the agenda. That's first ordinance.
Okay, I think, Mr. Brinson, you're looking at a agenda summary there, and we have the clerk with the official agenda. Mr. Reyes, followed by Ms. Misakowski and Mr. Lebonch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call number seven special, please.
Number seven called special by Mr. Reyes. Ms. Misakowski, Mr. Lebonch.
Eighteen, please.
Eighteen called special by Mr. Lebonch. Item eighteen, Mr. Lebonch, or seventeen? Eighteen. Item twenty has been continued. Members, any other specials on these items? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. On the balance of the items, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on item thirteen, please. Next item.
Next item is, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 27 through 44.
Twenty-seven through forty-four. Now before us, I have cards on item number forty. Let's call that special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council, so we shall deem the public hearings satisfied. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Lebonch?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven called special by Mr. Lebonch.
Mr. Holden.
That's for Mr. Holden? Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. On the balance of the items, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is, those are approved. Forthwith on item forty-one, please. Mr. Reyes.
I apologize, I needed to call thirty-nine special.
Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration of item thirty-nine. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Thirty-nine reconsidered and called special by Mr. Reyes. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is the closed-session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Close session items on the desk.
On the supplemental agenda, items forty-six through fifty-nine are items for which public hearings have not been held.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, so once again, we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call any specials? Items forty-six through fifty-nine, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number seven was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item seven.
Thank you, Council President. Perhaps we could have staff working on this report? I have some questions that... Any clarified?
Mr. Reyes, City Attorney's Office requesting that this be held on a desk until staff could come.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyes. I understand we have a message from our city attorney on this item?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Perez from our office is on his way.
So we'll hold this on the desk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's take the next item.
Item number eighteen was called special by Councilmember Lebonch.
Mr. Lebonch.
Thank you. This is item number eighteen. Could I have a, Mr. Deaton, please? This is a report relative to Los Angeles Business Tax Advisory Committee. Just wanted to get a couple of things out because the importance for tax reform. I got a letter, too. You saw that story in the paper? I got a letter, too, about taxes, from the Office of Finance, myself. But could you give me a little brief synopsis of this item?
Basically, the advisory committee has made some suggestions relative to reforms in the business tax, has to do with single filing of categories, looking at how many we put in professionals versus retail, et cetera, some of the, of the way we classify various businesses in the business tax, and some early filing provisions in business. The Budget and Finance Committee is requesting the city administrative officer and ourselves report back in a rather fairly quick time period to, and with the assistance of the Office of Finance, to determine what's the impact of these, and do they in fact have any major revenue impacts, and what operational changes would be the result from there.
Well, I just wanted to say, members of council, I do strongly support business tax reform, and look at it categories. We do go from peaks and valleys. We're going to understand the state has a serious financial problem that they're looking at, so we have to look at this cautiously. But I would want to make steps forward in some graduated effort to reform our business tax, especially the issues of categories, and how it's looked at. I think if everybody pays their taxes, we do have the revenue to provide the services for the people of Los Angeles. But for those who don't pay the taxes, because of the way the system works, that provides a problem for all those who do participate. And I would like to see it reduced. So I'm glad to hear that you're going to work very closely, and you're going to be back and report to the council and give us some options, so we'll be able to make the best decision for the people of Los Angeles on the important measure of business tax licensing performed.
One additional comment, the, if you go on the city's internet site, there is a provision under the Office of Finance that you can file online, and it does all the calculations for the individual business owner, and takes a lot of the mystery out of the entire process, and simplifies it significantly. And so if you go on the city's website, it has all the instructions, does the calculations, does much of the work, if not all the work, for the, for the taxpayers. So I think, from a simplicity standpoint, we have made some headways using those, some of the technology.
I got five seconds left. I thank you, but we have to do more, and simplify it, and also make it fair. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lebonch. Chair recognizes Mr. Brinson.
Yes, members of the council, I don't know how many of you got the same letter I got from the Tax Bureau. I received one of those letters you read about today in the paper, telling me that I needed a city business license.
I got that.
Did you get that also? Okay. I think there's something in that department that needs to be threshed out. Now, why they would, because a number of people, I mean, you know, I was a little disturbed because we're not allowed to have any other business. But a lot of people are upset about it, and I think that we ought to ask that department to figure out what the hell they're doing.
What they did, can I have an answer?
I know what they did. They didn't do it right.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item?
Ask the Office of Finance.
Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Members, I've just been reminded by our clerk that the council is in recess next week for the National League of Cities Conference, so without objection, we shall be sending all matters approved by council today forthwith. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is item number thirty-seven. That was called special for Councilmember Holden, and I don't believe he's here. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk.
Next item, then, would be item number thirty-nine, called special by Councilmember Reyes, and an amending motion has been distributed to the council members.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Thirty-nine A basically is an amending motion that essentially brings to light our need to change the hours of operation of this establishment. I'm asking it to be sent to Plum. But in addition, we're also doing some technical changes, and that we're allowing our focus to be on those hours of operation, and that the two variances delineated in the central APC determination of both should be deleted from this charter section 245. So I'm asking the council for review of this issue, and for it to be sent to Plum.
Okay, members request for this matter to be referred to Plum Committee? Is there any objection to that? Other questions, comments? Okay, it's two votes. One to assert jurisdiction, second to refer the matter to Plum. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on asserting jurisdiction. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, jurisdiction is asserted by the council over the commission action, and without objection, referred to Plum Committee.
Should we probably take a vote on it altogether?
On for the record. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
So ordered. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number forty, called special for cards from the public, and I understand Mr. Holden also wanted to call that matter special. Do you wish to hold that on the desk for Mr. Holden?
I believe Mr. Holden wished item thirty-seven be called special.
And also number forty.
Have we heard from his staff on that? If that's the case, let's proceed to the next item. Before doing so, Chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski. On item forty? Okay, we'll wait for Mr. Holden's arrival.
Item number seven was on the desk. I don't know if that matter is ready for consideration.
No, okay, we're still waiting for the city attorney on item number seven.
Okay, do we should take item, comments from the public on items not on the agenda?
Let's take public comment now for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within the city's jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Council calls forward Wiley Brown, I believe, followed by Karen Bass. Mr. Brown with us? Please come forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President of the City Council and council members. I have some statements that I would like to make on my behalf. Mr. President, as you, as you probably know, I served affidavits on all the, at the office of all of the council members and the mayor's office. And it's fair to say that the fact that I haven't got an unfavorable reaction on those affidavits, it's fair to say that the statements in the affidavit is true. So therefore, it brings to light that I've been the victim of racial discrimination, perhaps at its worst. And at this time, I would like for the city council to, to shove all the racial discrimination and ethnic bias and whatever that's connected with the statements in my affidavit aside, and get this matter off of the agenda. So at this time, I would like for you, Mr. President, that is the fact that Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas referred me to the city attorney's office for settlement, and I didn't get a good reception. I would like for you to make a resolution that the city attorney starts to, start a negotiation for settlement of this matter.
Thank you, sir. If I may ask you to conclude.
Also, I'd like to make one more statement, please. I would, if there's a lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, if there's a lawyer in the audience who's capable of handling such matters, I would like his business card. That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I understand Ms. Bass wishes to wait on her public comment. We now call forward Armando Herman for public comment.
I'd like to bring to your attention, again, that the matter of problems in the city with crime and violence, again, is escalating. I brought this to your attention before... before about how things were going to get worse, and it's very apparent that things are getting worse. We see that, does it really matter where city crime occurs? I don't think so. I don't think a lot of the people here and in the city really care where crime occurs. All we care about is that crime come to a stop. You know, the people in the city are demanding for some answers, and we want results. We're sick and tired of hearing these stories of people dying innocently due to gang violence or just violence overall. You should have established all the regulations that are reasonable and responsible for caring for the constituents, the people of Los Angeles, in any community. Our communities are at war, and so far I've seen no good results out of it. And I see Nick Pacheco trying at times, but he's not done enough. Our community is involved in lots of problems with gangs, and Nick Pacheco's done not very little, done nothing at all. So I'm saying to you, open your eyes and come out to this invitation of stopping this problem. You've read it in the papers. You're inviting people to your churches to put an end to this, and it's not happening. I told you this a year ago, and I brought it to the attention of Nick Pacheco in February of 2001, about how I see gangs and crime on a rise, and to this day, it continues. So when is it going to come to an end? When are you going to help the people of Los Angeles come out of the terrorism of gangs and violence in our neighborhoods?
If I may ask you to conclude, please.
City halls should show some great concern of responsibility to address the real issues, indeed, for all of us, and be accountable, and be ashamed for not stepping up the efforts and collaborate with reasonable solutions. When will you spearhead the needed changes and enforce laws and policies to correct the social disorder we have been encountering? The rise of gang violence is not acceptable. It is not acceptable. It is a setback for the communities and the people who have been looking for an opportunity away from the crisis. So show us something today.
Thank you.
Prove to us.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, I see Mr. Holden has arrived. Let's proceed to the next item.
Item number 37 was called special for Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden, we called a couple of special items, waiting your arrival. Let's take item 37 first.
Mr. Thomas, Creasho Manor, I think, is going to move that to be deleted, because that's part of the 10th district. And with that, Mr. President, we can move the, with that amendment, we can move item 37.
So it's an amending motion offered by Mr. Holden. Is there a second? Is there a second? Mr. Reyes, seconds. Any objection? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on the item as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 37 as amended is approved. Item 40, I believe, is next.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Holden, item 40, now before, you do have one card.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. President.
Let's hear from Jim McQuiston first on item number 40.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I rise in support of this study, but I do want to say that we do have to have safe places for the police department. As a seismic person, I'm very conscious of the fact that the building is unsafe, and we do need better facilities. But because of the mayor's new dispersal program, I do urge that the study be, so that the various functions can be dispersed through the various areas of the city that the mayor has designated as being more public sensitive. And since we have to get some rental facilities, it'd probably be easier in the dispersal. We do have email, we do have electronic communication, so there should be no problem in the dispersal effort, and it will make the police a lot more responsive and accessible to the people in the various areas.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. This concludes public comment on item number 40. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka to come to the center table. This is a motion, members, that asked the city council to instruct the Municipal Facilities Committee to report back to the council on ongoing efforts, actually efforts that have been in the works for some time, probably dating back, at least most recently, to 1996, when there was a facility study submitted to the city of Los Angeles, actually dealing with police issues. There were recommendations for some bond improvements. One bond was not successful in 1999 that would have dealt with Parker Center. Other bonds, as we know, have been successful, both to upgrade our emergency network system as well as to build and upgrade a number of specific police stations located throughout the city. But that has still left unresolved the issue of Parker Center. And I know that both our CAO and a city legislative analyst have been working on this problem particularly intensively recently. And I would also like to thank Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas for, although this was a Rule 16 motion introduced last week, he was able to have a very instructive and constructive meeting of the Information Technology and General Services Committee yesterday, which I think can also report, and we were lucky enough to read some of that information in the papers today. But I would like to ask Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton to update us as to where we are, what the current plans and possibilities are. I realize that there's nothing certain, but I know that we have a wealth of information that we have assembled, as well as some potential directions to recommend, once we have the Municipal Facilities Committee look at these alternatives to bring something to the council to go forward. So, Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka, could you give us a brief update?
Right. The, and long before 1996, there was identification of problems relative to Parker Center and some other police facilities, but in 1996, Cosmat provided a study and reported on several things. And I'd just like to point out that, in addition to Parker Center, they suggested that two new area stations be constructed, three existing area stations be refurbished and replaced, construct the bomb squad facility, and provide $6 million of facilities improvements. In Prop Q, the completion of those two new area stations, actually a third one has been included, we are replacing four area stations. We have two bomb facilities in $50 million instead of $6 million of facility renovation that we're in the process of doing today. And construction has begun on the West Valley one some, a couple of months ago. So as opposed to standing still, we have not been standing still, but Parker Center, as a result of the Cosmat study and the city administrative officer reported in 1996 as follows on Parker Center, it does not meet current code requirements, requires fire life safety and disabled access code improvements. It probably requires seismic strengthening, severely overcrowded, contains asbestos, and mechanical systems need to be replaced, et cetera, et cetera. And as a part of Prop, so in 1999, this council put on the ballot a proposal to redo Parker Center, as well as some other police facilities. That bond did not pass. In 2001, Prop Q was put on the ballot. It was a determination not to include Parker Center because it did not believe, given the political climate, that Parker Center would help the bond be passed. Since the bond passed with something like 250 votes to spare, that was probably a good political call. As a part, as I said before, Prop Q has $50 million worth of renovation money. As we, in the Prop Q Oversight Committee, we looked at the various possibilities of the use of that money. Various stations ranged from $3 to $6 million in their refurbishment, but Parker Center would have taken to refurbish it, at least in the most basic sense, $114 million. And it was at that point, it was very clear that refurbishment was not an option, and we have begun to look for alternatives for Parker Center relative to building a new facility. And then if we're building a new facility, what do we do with Parker Center in the interim? Do we move people out of Parker Center and build on the existing site? Or do we, in fact, find another site, keep them in Parker Center, and build them on those, on yet another site? The cost of a new Parker Center would be roughly $150 million, depending on land cost and the communications, et cetera. There are some basic decisions that have to be looked at. We are looking at alternatives, like I said, of relocation, and we'll be coming back, as a result of this motion, in, I think, fairly short order, with a plan, and also the instructions of the committee yesterday on what to, what to, how to approach this problem relative to movement people out of Parker Center, that's a good idea, and where to locate, and the size of the facility, and what will be included in the facility. In other words, what functions? We lease some 150,000 square feet in downtown Los Angeles for other purposes. Some of those things might be included or not included in the, in the ultimate building, and whether one building or more buildings are required.
So the report will look at both one whole site, possible consolidation, and possible value in decentralization where appropriate, and where those kinds of uses don't need to be centrally located, but can be distributed throughout in some of our other facilities, and particularly some of the newer facilities.
Absolutely. And also, in pursuant to the, I think, the thrust of both the mayor and the council of providing as much, although we do, we will have some 21 stations, but other maybe administrative functions in other parts of the city as well.
And you indicated that you would bring this, or hope that this report could be brought back in relatively short order. Can you quantify relatively short order? How soon do you think we can expect a report back? Right after the first of the year, perhaps?
I think in the latter part of January, early part of February.
Okay, well, let's schedule this, then, for
Perhaps sooner if we see a
A report in 60 days or sooner, with a report on the exhaustive look at the alternatives and a recommendation for the council, so that we can proceed.
Could I, um,
Yes, Mr. Fujioka.
Just add a couple of brief comments. With respect to the overall issue of whether or not we should replace Parker Center, our office fully supports the absolute need to replace Parker Center. One thing I would stress, though, is that we do so in a very, in a careful, thoughtful manner, because the issue of whether or not we move Parker Center and the services currently housed in Parker Center in its entirety to another location must be looked at carefully. Because in our, in my opinion, there are some services in Parker Center that I don't feel need to be kept in a central location. We can place them in another location throughout the city at, I think, considerable cost savings. And also, we ask that the, that the Police Commission and the Police Department work with our two offices. We don't need anyone to go off on their own during something independent that's outside of the current structure that this council is putting in place, so that we're working at concert, and that we're not working at, with separate goals and objectives. This is a common goal and objective for the city of Los Angeles. This is a very important objective, but we need to do it in a very thoughtful, very comprehensive way, and not in a knee-jerk way. If we just, if we talk about moving people immediately, the build-out costs could be, could impact how much money we have to construct a quality police headquarters. We have to be mindful of not just the short term, but the long-term benefit, because this headquarters will be with us for many, many years. So as part of this, I would strongly suggest that we ask the Police Commission and the department to work closely with the CLA and the CAO in putting this report together. Thank you.
One last comment, not direct on point on Parker Center, but on, reading newspaper this morning, indicated that I was recommending borrowing money. And I'd like to clarify that some time ago, this council set a 6% of city revenues as a cap on our bonding, our debt, our debt service. As a result of that, and also a policy that the council put in place that said that that borrowing would be used for assets that had a life longer than six years, not this year, but next year, and hence the way we borrow, we would borrow money that would impact next year, there's some $300 million of debt capacity that is currently, would be freed up next year as a result in part to this policy, and also paying off some judgment bonds. This money, we are currently paying on debt service, so with no change in overall debt service, and not aggregating our responsibility relative to that cap, but using borrowing for what it should have been used for all along, we are in a position today, because of that policy, to be able to use it for Parker Center and on long-term assets, where in the past, we have used them for much more transitory-type assets that, and not used them for the purposes that I believe that that's, those kinds of long-term borrowings should be used for.
Thank you, Mr. Deaton. I agree, and thank you for clarifying that that policy is in place, that this would not just be some additional borrowing, sort of out of the blue, that would still be totally consistent with every policy that the city set for itself on its debt cap and its debt limit, and that, that has been allowed through our bonding agencies to allow us to maintain the highest credit capable. The other thing that I must stress, and although it's appropriate, as Mr. Fujioka indicated, that the Police Department and the Police Commission work within this context, that is also a policy that we set that through, in years past, when we had departments or agencies building their own facilities, we found they may be very good at providing services, but they were not knowledgeable about building facilities. So that's why we needed and have established the Oversight Committee that contains the CLA, CAO, our financial people, and our facilities are, the city engineer that we just designated last week. Those are the people who can help get a project done on time and on budget, but we clearly need the Fire, the Police Department to be working with us in terms of what is needed, to make the assessment of what has to be part of a major central center, and what can be decentralized out in other areas and need different kinds of accommodation. So I ask for an "I" vote on this, with the intent that something will be brought back to the city, that we could finance, we could construct, we could meet all of the needs of the Police Department, and yet, and our debt policy, and yet move forward, finally, on bringing something that has needed attention, as Mr. Deaton said, long before it was reported in the '96 study, and ask for an "I" vote.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss, followed by Mr. LeBange and Mr. Zine, and Mr. Holden.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. President. Colleagues, I really appreciate the efforts that everyone has put into this so far, because it is a terribly important issue, finding more, better space for the folks who keep our city safe. But you know, there are other pressing needs in the public safety arena where we likewise need more space to protect the public. I mean, right now, the criminalists who analyze DNA evidence that's collected in sexual assaults are basically bursting at the seams over at Piper Tech. They have 15 criminalists, that's one full shift, and they're at their built-out space over there. There are hundreds, if not perhaps thousands, of DNA kits, of samples from sexual assault victims that lie untested to this day. There are storage lockers that have rapidly outgrown their capacity to store this critical evidence that is collected in sexual assaults, and all the while, we know, we know to an absolute certainty that people who commit rapes and who commit sexual assaults are recidivists, and they are out there on the streets. They will keep committing these crimes again, and again, and again, and we're not doing anything to stop them, because we're not creating more space for DNA criminalists, and we're not bringing on new criminalists as quickly as we ought to. And so I'd like to ask you, Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka, if, as part of this process of studying space, if you could also incorporate into that a study of how can we increase the amount of space that can be used by our DNA criminalists? You know, and there are many ways to skin a cat. For example, they're over there at Piper Tech. There are other aspects of Scientific Investigation Division that are over there at Piper Tech. Perhaps you could study ways to relocate some of them, along with those aspects of SID that are at Parker Center that would get relocated, so you could build out more space at Piper Tech. Because I don't think it's fair to the people of this city to ask them to wait for this new crime lab before we hire new criminalists. I think, I think we've got to take this opportunity to try to do something good in this area. I think, I think we've got to take this opportunity to try to do something good in this area as well. Do you have any thoughts-
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the crime lab, because as you know, myself, our chief of police, and we have the county sheriff, the county CAO, and a representative from Council of LA sit on a joint powers authority for the express purpose of building this new consolidated crime lab with the County of Los Angeles. Presently, to accommodate the current number of staff and the goal, the departments go to hire additional criminals, the department is looking at conducting, or having a split shift, basically, so having some workdays and some work nights. They feel, and I've talked to the department recently about this issue, that on a short-term basis, that should be able to address their needs. What is difficult is that because we're in a very aggressive construction schedule to build this brand-new crime lab, to put any money into this function now to build out additional space may not be the most effective use of our funds, when they have an option, and that option being they can run a night shift, and yet they have, those that they recently recruited have expressed a willingness, on a volunteer basis, to work at night, so it can address some of their needs.
I understand and agree with that, but there are, there are many schools of thought, both in law enforcement and the prosecutorial community, on the split shift business. And I don't think we have to pass judgment on that right now. My motion is that as part of your examination of this space issue, that you also examine and present us with options on how to increase space for the DNA criminalists who are presently working out of Piper Tech, and let us make that call. Mr. Deaton, do you have any, any suggestions?
No, no problem.
Understand.
And also, so the motion is, number one, address ways to increase the amount of space and lab capabilities available for the DNA criminalists. Number two, also address ways to increase the storage capabilities for the sexual assault evidence, which is, which is also critical. So that's my motion to add to the work you're already doing.
I second.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. LeBonde?
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, having the benefit of working here a long time, and remember when Parker Center had Central Division in there, Communications Division in there, Communication moved out, moved out to City Hall East. Now we just moved in a new building next to Parker Center, but it continually is like that cartoon where they're just moving, so many people in it, so broken down. Mr. Deaton and Mr. Fujioka, I would like to have you look at City Hall East in some form as a public safety city hall. Well, Fire Department is in there now, and our city attorney is in there now, and our Parks Department belongs in the parks. It doesn't belong in City Hall East. You certainly do, and the Controller certainly does, but there could be some aspects of getting police administration in there. Right now, presently at Parker Center, we have robbery homicide, we have the detectives' units, we have the juvenile division, we have bunco forgery, or now financial crimes. I think, in looking at, in talking with the police department, and the police commission was considering this this morning, is to look at any aspect along the transit line, when I say that, the subway line, where some of these divisions that are in Parker Center could be out on the transit line. In 15 minutes, they could be from North Hollywood in downtown LA. And that also, we spent $4.2 billion on that transit line, let's see what's along there and see if some of these units could be placed out there. But at the same time, look at City Hall East as a possibility to reconfigure. Right now, you're moving people in City Hall East to do the fire life safety, that's a good building, it would be close for the police administration to be in there as a public safety building. And to follow up on Councilman Jack Weiss, Parker, excuse me, Piper Center, named after C. Irwin Piper, a predecessor to you, Mr. Fujioka.
Doctor, Doctor C. Irwin.
Doctor, all right, thank you, Ron, I appreciate that. There'll be no Dr. Ronald Deaton ever, but all right, Doctor C. Irwin Piper came up with the vision which created the largest municipal building at the time there. And in following up what Jack said, and when he talked about the crime lab, I remember in past, working with the then-Captain DeLaterante of the crime unit to expand into the parking area of Piper Tech to create space. And looking at the crisis that we're in right now, I would say let's also look at City Hall East for police administration, but also Piper Technical Center, which has a lot of space which is parking, which could be converted to other spaces if we build a parking adjacent to the Santa Fe right away where all the old police cars are parked. There's a lot of concepts that could be used. So the three things I want to just say, so you make sure you're focused, public safety city hall, City Hall East, relocate units out of there that are not essential to the city's central administration, regionalize, push them out, and use the subway line, or the blue line, or the green line, whatever line would be convenient. Number two, look at Piper Technical Center as a possibility to build out and to see what could be done in building out Piper Technical Center as a building in that parking spaces, and then rebuild the parking adjacent to that in some configuration. I'm 21 seconds over my time, I apologize for taking the extra time, council members, but I think it's such an important issue.
Mr. LeBonde, I take that as a motion. I think that is a great idea, and I wholeheartedly second that motion.
All right, good.
The idea of a public safety city hall, it's a very, very impressive idea. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Zein.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. The question of Parker Center, 47-year-old structure that had rotary telephones when it was established 47 years ago, and as, still does have rotary telephones, according to my distinguished colleague, soon-to-be Assemblyman Markley Thomas, we have disaster at Parker Center, which we all know. This is all coming for, to Information Technology General Services Committee for a full review. And I've got a report that the police commission met this morning, and the police commission direction is to move out of Parker Center within the next 90 days, very aggressive campaign, and to rebuild Parker Center on the same site in a period of seven years. That's what the commission's going to recommend, and that was reported to me by one of my deputies who was covering the police commission meeting. Now, I don't think it's reasonable to think they're going to be out of there in 90 days, but a question is, we have leased property all over the city of Los Angeles, and we're going to receive a report from different departments, and I think the CAO and the CLA are involved in this, to determine what entities within the city family are in leased properties around the city. And I know that Parker Center, as I worked there in the past, and a lot of departments have everything contained in one particular structure, but the dilapidated condition of Parker Center and the fact that it outuses its life, to be very frank, we need to come up with a comprehensive plan, whereas the floors are falling within Parker Center, the earthquake damage, it hasn't been fixed. And I know it doesn't pay to refurbish Parker Center, but to demolish Parker Center and to build a new structure. The question is, what do we do in the meantime?
That's true.
We've got a number of Cal-OSHA violations, we've got a number of health and safety violations, we've got a number of work comp claims, we've got a number of payments that have been paid out to city employees, both sworn and civilian, because of the conditions at Parker Center. So my concern is that we do this in a logical manner and not what was done, and I keep bringing this up, Mr. Deaton, the 77th Regional Police Facility that somehow went on the wrong track, and things went askew, and it didn't turn out as planned, and it was way over cost. So the blunders in the past, hopefully, we'll be able to correct with this plan. And when I look at the new Caltrans building being built across the street, where the state is paying for that, and they're doing a state-of-the-art Caltrans facility, we need to do the same thing with the LAPD. And I know that the East LA College and the lab that's going to be established there someday, maybe in our lifetime, will, will help some of the problems with the chemists and the analysis of chemicals and analysis of narcotics, et cetera. But in the meantime, we've got to do something, and I don't think it's going to be 90 days when we get the report back from the police commission, they want to be out of there in 90 days. But the parking structure is insufficient, the operation's insufficient, but I don't think that we need to house everything in this technology era in what is considered a Parker Center, that some of those operations can be farmed out to other locations within the city of Los Angeles, whether we own the property. But 419, 433 South Spring, Figueroa, and Joe Gunn from the police commission told me yesterday after our meeting that his police commission staff is spread out at three different facilities. And what we learned, if anything, from Rampart Division, from the investigation that took place, is you need to maintain control of the personnel, you need to maintain audit and supervision.
Mr. Zein.
So I will sum up by saying, Mr. Deaton has a comment.
I just wanted to point out, in the Caltrans situation, is that, given this council's instruction, we purchased the properties where they're building, the properties that they did not own, we purchased those properties for them. Transfers in exchange, worked out a lease with, we're in the process of working on a lease for two floors for our own transportation department in that building, once it gets completed, so we can have this synergy of Caltrans and our own department working together. And we did that without any assistance of various people.
Thank you.
This will all come back to Information Technology General Services Committee, correct?
Absolutely.
The whole kit and caboodle.
Absolutely.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. Deaton, Mr. Dean, did you ever hear of the First Street Project?
Yes, I did.
Did you ever hear of a guy named Jerry Snyder?
I have.
That's right. You were now, you were aware then, you're aware now, that part of the First Street Project, it was the Twin Towers, was that supposed to be Twin Towers Project? You can answer that yes or no, Mr. Dean.
Twin Towers, I thought was the, was the jail, I thought there was just-
No, 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 there's another Twin Towers. There was two buildings that we were going to build for the city of Los Angeles. One was the administrative building, one was the new Parker Center.
I think it was just one building.
Yeah, no, you, Mr., come on, Mr. Deaton, tell the truth around here.
I am.
The fact of the matter is, there was two buildings, is that right, Mr. Fujioka?
Oh, actually, sir, I think there was only one building, First Street, um-
There was, there were going to be two, they were going to build one, going to build another one.
Oh.
Okay? And then we, Mr. Snyder, after a long bid, got, awarded the contract, and the money was available for that. What happened to the money? Mr. Dean?
I think they canceled the contract.
Why did they cancel? They had the money, what to do with the money?
I think they were going to borrow the money.
No, they had an arrangement for the money, I think it was a bond measure.
No, there was no bond money. No, there was, it was a leaseback purchase, I think. It was a Mclough situation, just like we're planning on, in essence, what we're planning on doing with Parker Center.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, let me just tell you that, when was the Parker Center constructed? How many years ago?
47 years ago.
47 years ago.
It was only 10 years old when I joined the city.
Right, was it red-tagged during the earthquake?
No, it was yellow-tagged.
Yellow-tagged, so that means they're still occupied, is that correct?
That's correct, that's why we are.
So, and they occupy it today?
That's right.
Right, fine. So the police chief, with crime being what it is in the city of Los Angeles, and the people having met with the chief yesterday, and the need is for more police officers, I for one will not put a building in front of the need to provide for additional police officers. If it's not 3,000, then maybe it should be 1,000. Whatever we can get, we need them now. And when the police commission can say, let's start the process for providing a building starting 90 days from now, to my, that's absurd, given the, what the crime rate is in this city, and the chief has already said, I need more police officers. And I'm saying that buildings don't arrest criminals, police officers do. I don't understand you guys at all. I don't even understand how the police commission, and you can sign off on this, knowing what the need really is. I think you should consult with the mayor, and the police chief will, before you jump the gun, who's running this city anyway? The police commission? The mayor? Police, uh, the police chief? You guys? We're not getting very far. And even if you had the money available, you're going to tell the police department what part of this organization's structure should be in one building, what part should be in another building, when they should decide how their police operations ought to be, for the good of the people of the city of Los Angeles, and then you design your building accordingly. But he, you got an idea, someone else has got an idea, and you know what? All kind of wet. It's like the blind leading the blind, they really don't know what they're doing. Today, you, Bill, you grade them. Mr. Fujioka, you are, you are on top of it. And you, you too, Mr. Dean.
Mr. Holden.
But the fact of the matter is that, I'm saying, and I'm going to sit down, Mr. President, we've had this problem, a mix-up, because you have too many hands making the pie. And of course, it gets spoiled every time. I'm going to vote for more police, I'm going to vote against this, number one, unless it's amended, to consider providing for additional police officers first.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard?
Just one last comment, if I might respond to Mr. Holden. I've worked with the last five police chiefs on getting another Parker Center, and part of the problem is the ability to, is not just numbers, but to take the numbers you have and work the most efficiently you can with those numbers. And you have to do, and we have both a problem for, I believe, of too few police, and I also believe that the facilities the police department has is inadequate, and that's why Prop Q, I encourage Prop Q. And secondly, I think we need to do some additional things relative to the administration building.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, I believe staff is here on item number seven, that's being held on the desk.
Item number seven, now before, it's called special by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Item number seven, we received the ordinance yesterday, I believe, and we were going through the language, it's a very complicated issue here, and it's further complicated by the fact that I see that the community design overlay zones are not being included. And the reason why I felt it was important to highlight this to the rest of my colleagues is that back when we started about a year and a half ago, those of us who started back that, that July, one of the first items was to oversee some of these issues as it applied to private property, and how we were going to try to deal with design issues, this is compatibility. At that time, there was discussion, and was brought to light, and it happens in my district, that we have these boxes sticking out of the ground, they're tagged, they're not well-kept, they become a blighting effect, and one of the, there were several suggestions made, and how can we make them more of a compatible element on our streetscape. And those discussions, I think is applicable to what we're looking at here today. So I wanted to ask these questions in terms of how is it that we, we can include the community design overlays? I know we could just amend this to include them, and we can do that on the floor if we get the support. But just as important is, is the notion of engaging community and making sure that these boxes are compatible, even though they're on public right-of-ways, where does that fit in? You have specific plans, you have historic overlay zones, so why can't we have community design overlays added to that?
Councilman, the policy actually affects the entire city. The specific plan areas and pedestrian-oriented districts have a special additional requirement that the boxes must go underground in those areas. So the policy actually does have aesthetic considerations for the entire city, not just those historical zones or the pedestrian districts.
Well, in the ordinance, it just cites certain specific police planning tools that we have in which these issues are raised, so I wanted to amend this to include community design overlays.
Do you want me to address that? Okay, it's, it's in a different zone. The, the policy, the part where it lists out the specific plan, that is an additional layer on top of the entire policy. In the entire city, there are requirements on aesthetics as far as the size.
No, I understand that, but those are two tools. Specific plans is one tool, historic overlay zones is another two, and then there's another one, they're called community design overlays. I want to add that layer to be included in that list that's cited in the ordinance. That's the point of the amendment.
Councilman, Ed Perez with the city attorney's office, your specific request, I have not personally evaluated and reviewed. It sounds like we could do what you want, but I can't give you a definitive answer at this point. This is the first I've heard of this idea, but if it meets the criteria of the others, then I don't see why you couldn't include it in here.
So, not to be an obstructionist in the process, I just want to make sure that the communities that are being focused upon, because we don't have these protections, and that's the reason why the community design overlays exist, is to add that layer of work that, that supports the notion of how we improve these neighborhoods that don't have that protection. To have these boxes spring up flies in the face of our investment with Lonnie, TNI, all the streetscape work that we've been doing in many of our communities that need this kind of- that need this kind of attention, from the valley down to the Wilmington and to the east side and south side as well. Uh, we don't have those protections, and we're trying to establish that. So, if you can't give me a, a specific answer right now, then I would move to continue this item until we understand how we can apply the community design overlay as an added layer in which we can, uh, make sure that these instruments or these, uh, facilities, what's the proper term for them, those boxes?
Above-ground facilities.
Above-ground facilities are treated appropriately based on what's happening in that respective neighborhood.
Yes, Councilman, if I could just add, if I understand what you're saying, I think your request would have to be forwarded to the Planning Department and our Rural Property Section, which handles the Planning Department issues. And, and you're correct, I can't give you a definitive answer today on that.
So, as Chair of Plumb, I would very much appreciate that, seeing that we order, we work with the Planning Department to make sure we have those assurances. Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Uh, before recognizing our next speaker, uh, members of the council, you may not know this, but sitting in front of us, we have the Trooper of the Year award recipient. Uh, Ms. Perez, within this last week, I understand, underwent a procedure for an appendectomy?
That's correct.
Less than one week later, he's sitting here before us, doing a good job. What a trooper. Mr. Weiss?
I thanked the Vicodin.
Mr. Weiss?
That was good. That was very good. Hope, I hope, uh, hope your recovery continues to go as well as it clearly is going.
Thank you.
Um, and I appreciate your responses to Mr. Reyes's questions. Um, I will just tell you candidly that I know how extraordinarily hard folks have been working on this proposed ordinance. Um, but it did just arrive in final form in our offices yesterday afternoon, and I know particularly how hard the chair of the committee, um, our outgoing, our outgoing mayor, pro tem, council member and friend, Mark Ridley Thomas, has worked on this. Um, I, uh, am not at a comfort levels today, given the complexity of the issue, given the questions that Mr. Reyes was raising, and given questions that I have involving my own district, including involving areas in my own district where there simply are no above-ground facilities on public right-of-ways. There're just, there're just none. Um, I don't, uh, have a comfort level enabling me to, uh, move forward on this today. I don't have any desire or intent to obstruct the matter, and I, I simply need more time to review it. And, um, so with the understanding of the chair of the committee who has worked so extraordinarily hard on this, I would move that we continue consideration of this matter, uh, until we get back from our break. It is a very complicated and significant ordinance. It's how many pages long, Mr. Perez?
Uh, seventeen, eighteen.
It's an eighteen-page ordinance that just arrived in council offices in final form yesterday afternoon, and I think it would be, uh, it would behoove us before we adopt something this significant with citywide ramifications, as Mr. Reyes pointed out, to, uh, to go the extra mile and give it fuller, uh, consideration. Uh, as I say before, not with an eye towards obstructing it, but with an eye towards having a full and complete understanding of what we're doing. So that's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Uh, Mr. Reyes seconds. The chair recognizes Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, um, I simply rise to, um, accept the amendment made by Mr. Reyes. Uh, if it is the will of the body to continue, uh, this matter, then so be it. Let me just simply say that, um, a considerable amount of time and investment has been made, as has been indicated by Mr. Weiss. I appreciate, uh, that there are districts that are more, uh, impacted than are others. Um, and yet I hasten to add that, uh, this is a citywide policy and matter. Some districts, uh, feel an acute impact. Uh, Mr. Weiss, uh, register that, registers that concern and, um, seeks to, uh, as diligently as he possibly can, represent the interest of his respective constituencies and our communities in the Fifth Council District. I simply wanted to be appreciated that this matter came to our attention pursuant to, uh, a, uh, significant amount of effort by the Eleventh Council District. Ms. Miskowski has, uh, very, uh, carefully monitored this process, um, and the extent to which there are similar communities, that is, uh, eleven and five respectively. Uh, I, uh, have got, uh, a level of confidence, uh, that, um, those communities have been adequately covered with the degree of sensitivity. Uh, we've had, uh, several public hearings on this issue. Uh, we've, uh, negotiated with the respective council offices, uh, pursuant to the appropriate laws that govern our communication. And, uh, beyond that, Madam, um, uh, President, uh, we have, uh, talked with, uh, the various industry representatives, constituent groups, uh, rather repeatedly. Uh, I, I, um, offer those, uh, insights simply to try to create a level of confidence that we are in good shape with this ordinance, if it is the will of the body, as has been, uh, requested to continue it. I have no strong, uh, objection. However, uh, simply know that, uh, your committee has done its work and done it carefully. Uh, these two individuals on the city staff have done a major league, a major league effort to scrub every, uh, detail, uh, to, um, the committee's satisfaction. Thus, the ordinance, uh, is before you. Madam President, the will of the body will prevail.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Uh, Madam Clerk, what is before us? Uh, there is a motion to continue, however, uh, it need a clarification on the continuation date. Until the week after-
It can be the week after. The, the break is, uh, December 2nd, so-
Next, we saw the first day will be December 10th.
The next meeting will be Tuesday, December 9th, 10th?
10th.
That would be, uh, or, let's do Wednesday, the 11th, just to be certain that people have the chance to review it, uh, when they get back.
All right, members. You've heard the, uh, request for continuance. That would include also Mr. Reyes's amendment. Um, if there's no objection, to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. That matter is approved for continuation to December 11th, along with the, uh, other recommendations. Thank you. At this time, the chair would like to recognize Council President Alex Padilla. Mr. Padilla.
Members of the council, uh, as y'all know, today is one of mixed emotions for us here around the Horseshoe, and for many people of the Eighth Council District. Uh, wanna invite to stand beside me at this point, our colleague and friend, uh, council president, pro tem, Mr. Mark Ridley Thomas. I guess it's only fitting that we just finished a, uh, matter out of the Information Technology and General Services Committee, and now we, uh, transition, uh, into a special presentation and recognition of one of our colleagues. Before saying much else, though, I want to ask our folks from the ICA to please cue a short video.
I'm opposed to police brutality. I'm for good law enforcement.
I expect to be clear about what it is we need to do, bold when necessary, and build the kind of coalitions in this town that are sorely needed.
There's nothing short of a social breakdown that's of an unprecedented level in this city.
This evening's meeting is our first public hearing. This is a, an opportunity for us to make some connections, all right?
The righteous indignation that is resident in, uh, the community at large about, uh, liquor stores and the over-concentration and the nuisances of such, uh, they have to come forward like never before and make clear that we are fed up with this problem. That's the only way we can deal with it.
To elect, uh, a person to the office of, of city councilperson and/or mayor is to essentially say, "We expect you to take care of our interests, our business, in such a way that the quality of our lives will be improved." And that's what citizen involvement is ultimately about. I think it's important that citizens of the city of Los Angeles lend whatever resources they have to make this city a better city. Uh, and that's essentially what I'm attempting to do.
We will not allow the mayor of the city of Los Angeles to look the other way and allow our projects to be disrupted.
Prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
May I, uh, take this opportunity on behalf of the constituents of the Eighth District, particularly in the Vermont, Manchester community, to say thank you for your leadership and your assistance in helping move this forward, and to the entirety of the city council for its unanimous support and vote.
In Los Angeles today, a day of dialogue.
How to get along with each other.
There's a whole day of dialogue.
The first step toward racial harmony here in Los Angeles.
Bringing those with differences to the same table.
To get people of all racial and ethnic background talking in one room.
The day of dialogue was the brainchild of just one city council.
If we are mature individuals prepared to confront some of those things that diminish the quality of life, then we have to engage in a meaningful discussion of the same. I simply rise to call this to the attention of our viewership and to say to all of you as members of the council, uh, this is something of which, uh, we can be proud, and we, uh, appeal to you for your continued support as we move, uh, dialogue forward on this, uh, important, that is to say, critically important, public policy issue. When we think about, uh, nine eleven, uh, the most significant notion that occurs to us is the apprehending of those who were, um, responsible for those terrorist acts. We do that in the name of justice and pursuit of justice. In each opportunity we can seize to, um, act preventively, to act preemptively, we are obliged to do so.
Empowerment keeps coming up. Uh, what does that mean to you, and how does it work?
Well, what it really means is that people have an opportunity to have a direct say in the quality of life in their community. And it is important for local government to have that kind of connection with residents. Absent that, I think democracy is at risk.
and the years of accomplishment that our colleague, council member, Mark Ridley Thomas, is responsible for, for his Eighth Council District of the city of Los Angeles, but certainly for the city of Los Angeles as a whole. Uh, as many of you know, Mark is a lifelong resident of the city of Los Angeles, a graduate of Immaculate Heart College, and a doctoral recipient of the University of Southern California. And as we look back of the Mark Ridley Thomas years here in city council, uh, many of us will think days of dialogue, as was emphasized in the video. Many will think public safety, civil rights, and community-based policing. Many will recall his leadership example and the establishment of a constituent service center to better serve the residents of the Eighth Council District and the surrounding communities. Many of us will marvel at, uh, his leadership in representing the interests of the Coliseum, certainly in the discussions and negotiations with the National Football League. Uh, and I particularly admire his leadership and grasp of the issues as chair of the Information Technology and General Services Committee over the years. Uh, many people will, will think that today, the city of Los Angeles is losing, uh, a great member of the city council. Uh, while that may be in part true, I know that, uh, we're more than comforted by knowing that we're gaining a champion in Sacramento and a new representative of the Forty-Eighth Assembly District. So today, I want to take this brief moment to say, Mark, thank you for all that you've done personally. When I first joined the city council, I took my seat at the Horseshoe, looked to my right, saw Nick Pacheco, couldn't ask him any questions. But then I looked to my left and saw a tremendous and accomplished leader. And in the ways that were vocalized and the ways that were not vocalized, I want to thank you for helping me settle into this zoo and, uh, learn from you for the last several years. Want to congratulate you on all your successes in the past and the present, and certainly in the future. And as I think Ms. Galanter said in a brief reception prior to council meeting today, uh, remember us and, uh, send money from Sacramento. Have a resolution that I'm gonna wait to present-
All right. Uh, there are a number of our colleagues who would like to speak. I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I had the pleasure of meeting, um, Mark Ridley Thomas, uh, when he was first elected. I was working for Tom Bradley, and I had to appear before many council committees that Mark chaired. Um, and, uh, I have to tell you, he scared me to death. He was tough, you know? And, uh, you made me a stronger person to be able to stand here today as a council member. Uh, many of the, uh, things we saw on this video, um, really are going to be, um, remembered. Uh, your leadership on the Empowerment Congress, which is really, I believe, the, the kernel and the beginning of neighborhood councils. Um, everyone looked to you for how we set up those neighborhood councils and those Empowerment Congress. And, um, I had the pleasure of, of going to a few of them and know how wonderful it was and how people, um, I think, appreciated your willingness to have the community participate in the decision-making process. And they talked about days of dialogue. They talked about, um, your, they didn't mention in this part, but your leadership at the SCLC. Um, your career and commitment to public service didn't just begin when you became an elected official. Uh, SCLC became one of the preeminent organizations here in Los Angeles under your leadership. And I think that all of us are so going to miss you here, because you are oftentimes our conscience. You are someone who doesn't take no for an answer. Um, and I have learned a great deal from you. And I know that even though I didn't get to sit next to you during my brief time here in the city council, I always knew I could go to you and talk to you and get your advice. Um, you were always there for me, and know that, um, you are beloved by many of us and will be sorely missed. And I have had the pleasure of working with you through all of these years while I was in the mayor's office and, and now in, uh, my current position. But know that we are gonna be calling upon you, and I may ask you for your continued advice, and want to recognize your family, too, who I know have given up a lot to share with us, your husband and your father, um, so that he could, uh, do so much for our constituents, not only in his district but citywide. So, congratulations, and you really will be missed.
Thank you. Let me now call on Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Um, I want to say that I'm happy and I'm sad. Um, I'm sad that you're leaving this chamber, but I'm happy that I know your back line, and I'll be calling you on Monday, because I know you're gonna keep an eye out for us. You raise a standard for excellence as a public servant, and I can only hope to emulate you. Not only did you master the basics early on as a councilperson, but you took it to new levels, uh, most recently with Mylton Square and the approval of that, and the previous, uh, new shopping center at Slosson and Western. I only hope I can do half as much as you have done for your constituents. You have begun to transform the landscape of South Los Angeles, and for that I will be grateful, as are the residents of the Ninth Council District and the Eighth and the Tenth, I am sure. So, I look forward to a continued relationship with you. And again, I, you know, I'd like to acknowledge your families. Well, you have two very nice young men, and, um, you know, it's just been a real pleasure to watch them grow, and, and Avis is just a tremendous person and with a tremendous spirit, and I can see the results of, of your actions. They're such strong parents with a strong family foundation. So, here's to you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas. I met you when I was a director with the PPL, and we were having labor strife. And I remember a meeting we had-
And I remember a meeting we had out in Culver City, and you said, just stay the course, be patient, it'll all work out. Years later, it all worked out. Years later, we're colleagues together and I've had the pleasure of serving with you on Information Technology and General Services Committee, and I've learned from you. It's interesting that your two sons, when you came to City Council, were three years old, and now they're 15 years old. Football players, your wife, the family has stayed together through all the trials and tribulations of politics, a supportive family. And I know from my previous experience in law enforcement that you have turned your district around from what it once was to what it is today. I've attended your Empowerment Congress events and seen the showing of support. I see over the years what you've developed in that community, the part of Los Angeles to the betterment of that community, the Constituent Center. And I've been to that facility also. So accolades to you. Jefferson moved to the West Side, Mark Ridley Thomas has moved to Sacramento, to Northern California, to do what is good for the people of the state of California, to do what's good for the people of Los Angeles. And I remember that when Rudy Savornich and you had a thing when the council would end, you always concluded it. And I'm going to conclude it as we send you off with a salute, wishing you good fortune, goodwill in Sacramento. God bless you, Mark, and your family.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Chair recognizes Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Ridley Thomas, this is a particularly tough day for me on several accounts. Number one, in my view today, the Los Angeles City Council is losing its moral compass, its most persuasive, most consistent, most dedicated moral voice. And incidentally, a voice with none too shabby a vocabulary. And, 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 and your voice will not be readily replaced or replicated here. And when I followed the LA City Council for years before I came here, you were someone that I followed. The way you stuck your neck out and the way you stood out, in particular, on issues of civil rights and tolerance, issues which somehow seem in the last, even the last few days as we read the papers, to be issues which have fallen by the wayside in this city, which don't have quite the prominence, quite the way of gripping people that they, that they should. But they always gripped you and you always gripped an audience when you talked about them. You know, when I started here, Joel Wax sat next to me and I was, I really benefited from his wisdom as I would ask him questions. And over the last year and a half after Joel left, I would turn to you because, like Mr. Padilla, I can't turn to my left. And so I turned to my right. And, and even this morning, even this morning, just about an hour and a half ago, you, you tugged on me and you said, you know, there's something you got to pursue there. And, and I did. And I, and I nudged your back. That's been day in, day out for the last year and a half. I will always remember it and always be grateful. And I want to also salute Avis and Sinclair and Sebastian. You're an extraordinary family. And I want, I don't want to embarrass Sinclair and Sebastian any more than I have to, but I want you guys to know that there are a lot of well-known alums from your high school in Los Angeles, and I see them all the time. And whenever I see them, they talk about you guys. So folks are so proud of everything you've accomplished at high school and everything we know you guys are going to accomplish. Avis, it's a pleasure working with you on the dispute resolution part of the ledger. Congratulations to all of you. Look forward to seeing all of you in New Year's to come. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you. Let me call now on Mr. Reyes. Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one heck of a report you have here. A legacy of economic development, community empowerment. And as we look at the neighborhoods, West Adams, North University Park, Walden Village, Chesterfield Square, Lemire Park, Ramon Knolls, Green Meadows, Jefferson Park, what's great about this is that you've given an identity to our neighborhoods. It's not just South Central. And the fact is, with the investments that have been made here, you've given a community a sense of place and the respect they deserve as we go through our tribulations in a tale of two cities. Our murders, our gang violence are such that you've spearheaded our ability to look at these problems in a more creative manner. So I will take up that calling, if you will, and how we bring resources to our youth and how we create jobs. And I'm blown away when you showed me this report, 1981, 91, where a statement is made that we need to protect our seniors from these people who are stealing their homes. And what are one of your last acts? Predatory lending. So through all the tribulations, the turmoil of being in a council office, you've managed to maintain that focus. And the Lord knows what he's doing upstairs because we got it done, you got it done. And as a family, you've been able to establish that role model that our young people and our families need to see. And for that, I can't thank you enough. I look forward to working with you when you're up in the state. I know now we have an ally, a supporter. And as a staff person going through this process, I saw the creative tension amongst the elected officials. And no matter how tough it got, we never forgot the focus that we're here to serve our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Brunson.
Well, Mark, I've been listening to all this conversation from the new members of the council. It's me that's had to put up with you for the past 12 years. But, and you actually fooled voters four times, three times for the council, once for the assembly. But I'm going to get serious now. Mark has been a terrific council member. And Mark brought something to the council and to his community that only one other council member had done, and that was in the 12th District, we started this, started the citizens advisory committees 24 years ago. But he actually organized citizens advisory councils in his community and made them part of the community, part of the empowerment that's talked about. And that's important because for people to feel that they're part of a community and they're working for something, they have to feel like they are part of it and they are part of the decision-making process. And you did that. And that was, the only other thing I can say about you, you are the slowest-talking member of this council that I've encountered in 24 years. So that covers a lot of territory and a lot of good people. But seriously, Mark, I'm going to get serious. And, and you got a terrific family, your two sons and Avis, I mean, they've been supportive. They're a credit to the community and to you as a father and a, and a husband. I think that we're losing somebody very special, but the state is gaining somebody very special. And I know that the ethics and the attitude and the sense of fair play that you brought to this council, you're going to take to Sacramento. And I know that we're going to have a great friend there. But don't let all this go to your head, please, okay? I had to get a little funny because you were getting, everybody was getting so serious, you know? But seriously speaking, folks, this guy's been a terrific member of this council, and I've served with some of the great ones, and he's certainly one of them. Thank you.
Let me recognize Councilmember Ruth Galanter.
Yeah, I'm going to remind Hal. I want to start by telling you about a facet of Mark Ridley Thomas's career that all you new guys know nothing about. The reason you got to meet him at all as a council member is that in addition to his commitment to all the things you've been talking about, Mark is a very shrewd operator. And we are going to need one of those, another one of those in Sacramento. And so I am, of course, Mark, thrilled that you're going there. And I, I know that you will put those skills to good use for the city of Los Angeles, your district, and the rest of the city in Sacramento. And I'm looking forward to helping you any way I can. But what the rest of you don't know is that the original term limits ballot initiative as proposed by then-mayor Richard J. Reardon would have cut off the even-numbered district incumbents four years ago. And none of you would ever have had the opportunity to get to know Mark Ridley Thomas. Mark Ridley Thomas was smart enough to figure out a way to deal with this. Somebody was clearly going to get cut off in the middle of things under this term limits initiative. And so he brought to the council a motion to put on the ballot, a measure in support of term limits, that was identical to the other one with one difference, except for this one difference, which was the expiration date or the, the kick-in date for term limits for the even-numbered districts. And it is thanks to Mark that all of us who are still here are still here. And however you may feel about the rest of us, you at least have had the opportunity to work with Mark Ridley Thomas because he was able to pull that off. And the voters, in their zeal to enact term limits and, and get all of us, including all you new folks, out of office quickly, were smart enough to see that maybe we shouldn't overdo our hurry to do it. And I have always particularly admired that achievement, both your, your quick response in knowing how to deal with it and your success in getting it done. So I, I want to say thank you once again, I think. It depends which day you ask me. Some days, I'm not sure. But today, today I say thank you. I also think it's worth noting, and I do have to remind Hal, that every single council member that I'm aware of, that I served with, had neighborhood advisory committees, except for Joel Wax, who became the expert on neighborhood councils. Everybody else had them. What Mark did was he took it to a new level of, a much broader level of formal structure and formal organization. And at the time, I confess to a certain skepticism as to whether that was necessary. But looking back at it, I think that your taking it to that level of organization assisted the rest of the city in understanding what can be done by communities working with government. And so I congratulate you, along with everyone else, for that. But let's not kid ourselves, it's not that citizen participation was a new idea. What Mark did was to refine it and bring it to a level that other people could use without having to reinvent it for their own district each time. So I think that we do owe you a great debt. I have to say that one of the things I enjoy the most about you is your laugh. And we don't get nearly enough laughing in this council chamber. It's deadly serious in here, as you know. And life is not that deadly serious, although it can be close to deadly sometimes, as several of us in this room know. Nevertheless, it is, it is your ability to balance real life with being an elected official that I most admire, and I hope that you will be able to maintain that under a completely different set of pressures. You will at least be relieved from the pressure of the Brown Act, since, as we all know, it doesn't apply to the state legislature. And I wasn't, and I wasn't kidding. Yeah, maybe you could just repeal the whole thing. But I wasn't kidding when I offered you the send-off this morning in the reception. We do wish you well. I wish you well. I wish the family well. I'm glad to know the family will still be around here, even if you're flying back and forth. And I hope you'll come back and visit us. But we do expect you to send money.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Behind that column, Mark, stands a beautiful woman. I want her to come out there. That's Olivia Mitchell. Olivia Mitchell worked for Mayor Tom Bradley. Mayor Tom Bradley got elected in 1973. Mayor Tom Bradley said, let's open this city hall and bring all kinds of people in. And who showed up? Mark Thomas and Tom Labange, 28 years ago. And it was an absolutely wonderful experience because each young person came from all parts of the city to express their concerns and do the things that we all thought was right, and it's so important, and it's so great to see Olivia here. But Mark, all your work has had a profound impact. The Constituent Service Center is going to be there, and, and they're going to have a big fight to restore it, you know, in about 75 years, because it's such an important part of the community life. What you've done at Exposition Park is so important, because I, like all of us, love parks, but you got to really love parks and work parks. And you worked that park. And I see Margaret Farnham here, who's a wonderful member of the executive staff of the Coliseum Commission. And all that work that you've done, it's absolutely a beautiful facility, whether there's professional football there or not. It's an absolutely credit to us that we have that great building that is going to be 100 years old in 2023, and you've helped pushed it along and provide recognition and bring the museums. And if you ever want to see a traffic jam that you could love, it's all those yellow school buses on Menlo Avenue that you helped bring to the area. And Jesse Brewer Park, which was the first park in the city with soft cushion, right there, which is now a model for all parks. It's a very, very, many, many, many things that you've done, not to mention the restoration of the Great Fountain in Exposition Park, which you follow leads real well. I'm just pleased, and as Councilmember Galanter spoke of your work going forward, your knowledge of municipal government. When I went through with my family on a holiday this summer, 10-day trip through the Owens Valley, Yosemite, and the State Capitol, I visited our friends in the State Capitol, that's a different job that you have now. You, you're not as close to people as you want to be. You can't go right out to your district and say, well, what do you think about this tonight? And they'll write to do. You have to use that knowledge. But having the knowledge of all the cities now and your ability to carry it to a higher level is great, and I'm just proud of you. I'm proud of your relationship with the Immaculate Heart College and the Immaculate Heart Community and all the sisters there who all speak so highly of you, one of the last graduates of that great college up at Western and Los Feliz Boulevard. And I see all your staff right here and some of your former staff back there and your friends and family. I'm just pleased to, to have known you from a long, long time, to have known your passion too, because I have not always been on the same side, but your passion, that's all we ask for, is when we get here, is if we're able to express ourselves and represent the people who we represent, fight the good fight, and then move on and fight it again. So I'm just proud of you, and I have one gift, it's California Here I Come. It's a beautiful book, because now you're a representative of all the states, so you can't just go from San Diego to Eureka. You could see how beautiful this state is and, and represent all of us well. Congratulations to you, Mark, you're a beautiful man.
Thank you, Tom. Chair recognizes Councilmember Pacheco.
Mark, before I say anything to you or to our colleagues who had inabilities to communicate to the people to their left or right, I was just impressed to hear that they actually talked to other people before they did anything. But, what's the expression, paybacks? Mark, I never thought you'd talk slowly, but, but I did have a hard time following sometimes. And so that's probably why you always got a yes out of me. Okay, Mark, sounds good. But it's always been a pleasure to work with you here at the council. I think on many issues, we challenged each other, and I think that was part of the good, healthy process of debating the issues. I learned a lot from your challenges. And I think ultimately, as you have said many times, we have a certain responsibility here to bring out the best of everybody, not just here in the council, but in our communities. And your Empowerment Congress, I went to visit one time when you were having elections in the forum. I really is a model for the rest of the city, so I want to thank you personally for opening my eyes to how many things we can accomplish here in the city of Los Angeles. I actually asked Mark to second a couple of motions on his last day, because I wanted to have that as part of my record and your record here at City Council. I just can't tell you how much I appreciate everything you've given me and the guidance you've shared with me. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I speak from the chair, let me recognize Councilmember Holden.
Let me situate my mic now.
Wrigley Thomas.
All right, sir.
I knew Mark Wrigley Thomas when he was Mark Thomas.
That's right.
And he worked as an, he came, volunteered as an intern and supervised the Hahn's office, right? All right. And then the supervisor decided that if he should learn anything at all about government, he should come in and talk to Deputy Supervisor Nate Holden. And there was something strange about this young man. Then, wise or not...
Then, wise or not, I tried to impart information to him, just a little knowledge, known as a little wisdom. He rejected it then, and he's been rejecting it ever since.
And look how far he's come.
And look how far he's come. But you know what? He's still not on the mountaintop yet. Amen. The fact of the matter is that I can take longer than three minutes, everybody's had a red, you know, went over, so I'm going to go over a little bit. But I just want you to know that your family, biggest supporters of yours that you can find anywhere, and to the two young men, they were young boys when they came here, your wife, and you all greeted very well. The fact of the matter is that your dad is a trailblazer, there's no doubt about that. And I want you to clearly understand that that which he's been able to accomplish has been, there's a lot of obstacles in front of him, but he's overcome those obstacles. And in life, there will always be obstacles in your way, too, and up to now, your father and your mother and your neighbors and friends has helped you over those. But the time will come, as Ralph Bunchwitz said, when I heard him speak back in New Jersey after he settled a peace negotiation in the Middle East, he was Nobel Peace Prize winner, traveling around the country, he said, "When I was a young man, I was like a sponge. I absorbed everything, the way of life. I was kind of selfish. My folks, my parents, my friends, my neighbors, they gave to me, and I became where I am, what I am today", as he said. "But not that I'm in a position where I've required so much, then I give back. And the time will come when you'll do the same. In the meantime, just keep absorbing from your father and from your mother and from people that you meet in Sacramento and the ones that you met here. Just say, 'I remember what happened one day', you see? And that's what life is all about. It's a cruel world in which we live, and we know it every day when we read the papers and turn our televisions on. It is a cruel world, but the many have survived, and so will you. With the leadership, direction of your parents, your father in Sacramento, you will see others similarly situated in Sacramento. I've been there. It's a tough battleground. You'll be tested every day from whether or not, trying to decide whether or not you're true or false, ethical or unethical. They won't let you go. They'll always keep trying to destroy you, but you will continue to overcome because you've been prepared to do that. I know when Mr. Thomas took over the 8th District, not the district the way it is today, you had Judge Mills, who was my friend, and Bob Farrell, whom I served with, but since he's been in that office and representing that district, it's like new life, more parks, more recreation facilities, more businesses. See, better services and more benefits for the people. And you just drive through that district, and you can see that it's alive and well. And so as your successor will take office sometime next year, they'll take a better district, take control of a better district than it was when you took over. It's like life. When you were born, you say, "My life is worthwhile if it's better off because I've lived and been able to give back to the people." And so I would say to you, Mr. Thomas, Sacramento's a little tough, but I'm sure you'll survive there very, very well. Keep your eyes open, your ears open, and talk when you think that you have something to say. And I'm saying that seriously. And then they'll always respect you. They always know who you are. A man of few words, but when he speaks, everybody listens. And that's important in Sacramento. You'll be well received. You have a lot of friends and colleagues that you will make there. So I want to wish you Godspeed, and if you need any direction from Sacramento, but the bills, I know you'll introduce them, you know how to will, but got to be kind of mover and a shaker to make them get through sometime. I'd be glad to help you, as I have helped others. God bless you, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mark, let me just take a moment from the chair to say that, I think my colleagues have said it all, but as I watched that video, and you were asked, "What does empowerment mean to you?", and you said, "It means opportunity, opportunity for community." By that measure, you are a huge success, because the opportunities that you provided, that you gave to the community, and that what you called your Empowerment Congress, think about it, empowerment. Around here, folks covet power, and they want it. But you came into office and you said, "I'm going to share it. I'm going to let the community take it. I'm going to teach them to take it." That's what the Empowerment Congress is about, and I think you clearly are the father of neighborhood councils. Long before it was a flicker in the eye of anyone talking about charter reform, you were doing it, you showed the way. Everyone on this council has gone to an empowerment congress, because that was the platform, that was the laboratory, where it was shown that it could work. And I think the citizens of the City of Los Angeles owe you a debt of gratitude because of what you created that then took off. I saw Greg Nelson here and many other department heads who have come down in tribute to you in recognition of what you have done. It clearly is, has been said already, that you were and are the moral compass in standing for civil justice. We all get caught up in a whole lot of other things, but you stay that course, and you remind us time and again about that element that we can't forget, and you have stood for that, and I know you will stand for that when you go to Sacramento. And then beyond all that, as we look around the horseshoe and we call each other colleagues, you are one in this room that I can truly call a friend, and that has transcended politics. It has transcended our work environment. It is something that is very, very special to me, and I will miss your being around and available for that. And I think someone talked about your laughter. What a lot of others don't know around here is you have another hidden talent and quality that at least I have been able to hear from time to time, and that is your singing. You really will break out into song in your office, you'll bring out, break out new song, and it is that sense of good humor and that sense of good spirit, too, that I think will be missed around here. There are four speaker cards that have been submitted. I will ask whether or not you would like to speak at this point, or let me call on those, including, I think, a colleague, a former colleague or two.
Before we do that, Ms. Misakowski, I have, Mr. Ridley-Thomas, you'll appreciate this, an electronic greeting from one of our colleagues who's not here right now, Councilmember Garcetti, who sent me this message before he got on the plane. As you know, he's returning from Asia with the mayor and Councilmember Hahn. He wanted me to read for everybody that, this is from Councilmember Garcetti. "Mark Ridley-Thomas has been a friend, a mentor, and a man I am proud to serve with. He embodies the best of what elected officials should be: a warrior for social justice in our city, a healer in a society that too often needs reconciliation and love, and a skilled tactician, legislator, and city council member. He knows who he represents, and in doing so, he gives voice to those who are too often absent from the boardrooms, council chambers, and the levers of power in our society. He is an instigator in the best sense of the word, someone who pushes us all in this council and this city to do what we must, to change the rules and the resources to serve everyone, not just those who have done well in the past. On the council floor, Mark has shown a full range. He will scowl at you, trying to shame you into doing the right thing, but just then, his face will break, and he will guffaw in his trademark endearing way from across the aisle. His skills as a legislator are legion. I am proud to have collaborated with him in my short time on council. Mark is a father and a husband first and foremost, but he is also a brother to each and every one of us in his city. I thank him for his invaluable counsel, wisdom, and most importantly, his unerring sense of what is right. I can't wait to work with him in Sacramento." From Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Let me now first call on your former colleague, our former colleague, Rudy Savornich.
Mr. President, members of the council, city staff, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience, I believe that I have the distinct pleasure, both in the past and probably in our Assemblyman-elect's future, of being the only person who will have been his seatmate the longest in his elective tenure, having been seated with him and next to him for eight years. And unless he gets elected to the state senate and gets two terms and somebody sits next to him for as long, I'm it. And it was a wonderful eight years. Our districts neighbored one another, and in the joviality that we enjoyed here in the council chambers, we took care of serious business for each other's district. A couple of things that can best sum up our relationship here on the city council in that Councilwoman Misakowski once so pointedly pointed out that she never had the experience of seeing what three junior high school boys acted like in a homeroom class, but Savornich, Ridley-Thomas, and Wax came pretty close. The other is that I remember so very well that as our tenures started going along together, first, the Information Technology Committee, we both were able to serve as chairs of that committee. The Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee, we were both able to serve as chairs of that committee. The president pro tempore position on the Los Angeles City Council, we were both able to share that position. Then there was Congress. Well, we both don't want to talk about that. And then there's the Assembly, and only one of us want to talk about that. But here we are on a day that is indeed bittersweet in this chamber, and I guess one of the fondest memories that I do have is that, close into my tenure, the late council president, John Ferraro, was presiding. Mr. Ridley-Thomas had been here two years, and it maybe was a month into my tenure, and I ran up there to the podium to see where the speaker queue was, and I was due next to speak. So I went back to my seat, raised my microphone, stood up, and Council President Ferraro looked at me and said, "The chair recognizes Councilman Ridley-Thomas." I sat there, and I said, "Hmm, something's wrong here." Sat back down. Mr. Ferraro called me forward, and he said, "You have to understand how I could have made such a mistake, Mr. Savornich." I said, "How's that, Mr. President?" "Well, you both sit in the same part of the room. You both dress impeccably. Your districts neighbor one another, and you're of the same stature, and I guess the only way I'm going to be able to tell you apart for the next eight years is that Mr. Ridley-Thomas wears glasses." I didn't say anything. I was not about to question the council president. But in serving in eight years and now being gone about a year and a half, I came to realize that maybe that wasn't very accurate, until about two months ago. And then I had to make a visit to the ophthalmologist, gave me a new set of glasses. I tried them on, put them on, and the doctor said, "My God, it's Councilman Ridley-Thomas." And so on this day, I would guess that there's only two gestures that symbolize our camaraderie and our friendship in doing a serious job at this council, but enjoying one another's company and friendship, is that, first, I would like to wish Sebastian Sinclair and Avis well, and to my friend, my seatmate for eight years. I guess there's two things that can sum it all up. This will be the first. And the other, which became a tradition in this city council. Godspeed, and God bless you, my friend.
Thank you, Rudy. Let me also call at this time, former colleague, Mike Hernandez.
Madam President, members of the council, as you just heard, the councilman referred to me as Consejal. I remember going to the Empowerment Congress in his district and speaking to everybody in Spanish, as a reminder that his district did have people of Spanish descent, Spanish surnames, better known as Latinos in Los Angeles. And it's part of the message, I think, that Mark Ridley-Thomas and I have been trying to give this city since we first got elected. And I share that because my first remembrance of my colleague was that everybody thought we came from the same political position. We were known as liberals, we were known as activists, and they thought we'd work very well together. And the issue that we both immediately addressed, I believe, on the city council was the issue of the Human Relations Commission and the human relations that were ongoing in the city. And it was a different council then, I need to share that. And we were kind of standing out, and the media kind of picked up on that, that we were talking about not only the homicides and the gang activity that was going on between African-Americans and Latinos, but also the gang wars that were going on between African-Americans and African-Americans and Latinos and Latinos. Our kids were killing each other on the streets, and that became the basis of our relationship. And then we were baptized in an environment where the city had its worst floods out in the valley in December of our first year of service. And then in April of that first year, the worst riots this city had seen. And the districts that were impacted the most were not out in the valley and were not out on the west side. It was in the inner city. And the council members who had to do something about it were basically those of us who represented those communities that were being impacted at that time. And when we were talking about doing things like cleanups, to bring our city together to do something positive, the majority of the council felt it was a waste of time. And then you saw in the streets where the people of Los Angeles chose to stand up and heal themselves. We then dealt with an earthquake, and in dealing with that earthquake, that was on another side of town, but this earthquake impacted the whole city, and we were out there again trying to deal with those issues. I kind of want to share with that because our baptism was one of basically activity, not one of legislative action. But then when it came to legislative issues, I think that Mark and I stood together with several other colleagues in what I call a historic non-vote. And that was when we were dealing with the issue of Proposition 187. And the city attorney, who was now the mayor, wanted to basically file a brief. It was right after an election, and Councilman Joel Wax came in to try and get the city to restrain from filing that brief. And some of us stood up, and what we did is instead of learning how to count to eight at the time, we learned how to count to four, and we broke a quorum. And that's how that happened. And there was another historic vote from my perspective when we were dealing with water rates, because people who had swimming pools and larger yards, and it was hotter out in the valley deserved to have a discount, even though some of us realized that that discount was going to impact people who did not have pools and did not have larger yards. And we had to reach a compromise. And what happened was we learned to count to five, and we broke a quorum. And Mark Ridley-Thomas was part of those five. Now I'm sharing that because my remembrance of Mark Ridley-Thomas is what happened after Stephanie Kuhn was killed in my district. And we dealt with the issues of trying to deal with the gang activity in our city, and we put the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gangs together. And again, Mark chaired that. And today, you can honestly, I can honestly say that Alley Bridges is a result of that. The intervention programs that are going on in the city is a result of that. I think that Mark Ridley-Thomas... I think that Mark Ridley Thomas has had a legacy in this city of human relations. He's had a legacy in this city of empowering people. It's not what he's giving people, it's what he's teaching people how to do. And for that, I wanted to commend him. It was my pleasure and my honor to sit with Councilman Ridley Thomas in some very difficult times in this city. And again, it was those human relations issues that I think had the major impact in calling Los Angeles the great city that it is, and there's no question in my mind that it wouldn't have happened without Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas being a part of this council.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Let me call the four people who have submitted cards to speak. First, Ted Hunt, Karen Bass, Margaret Farnum, and then Carolyn Webb-Demasius. Ted.
Madam Chair, Ted Hunt, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Los Angeles Police Protective League, we want to congratulate Mark Ridley Thomas on his years of service, not only to his constituents, to the community, and to this great city that we all love. We've been particularly impressed with his leadership in the Empowerment Congress. He invited me, and I also attended days of dialogue facing the most serious social issues that we have. And all the while, he's been able to maintain an all-American family, a lovely and accomplished wife, two very handsome and bright young men as sons. On a personal note, leadership takes courage, and I truly believe that Mark Ridley Thomas has both. As the League's representative in Sacramento, I look forward to working with him and bringing resources back to our great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Bass.
It's been very nice to sit here and listen to the Councilman's colleagues talk about the contribution that he has made to the horseshoe and also to the city in general. But I wanted to speak on behalf of the role that he has played in working in collaboration with community organizations. I'm the Executive Director of the Community Coalition, and I have to say that this day kind of snuck up on a lot of us. We didn't really realize that this was his last day in council until we read it in the paper a couple of weeks ago, because I do believe there would be many community organizations here. As I watched the videotape, I looked at the history and remembered 1992, and I think that part of his collaboration with the community is well-known. For our organization, the Coalition, we rushed down here when we found out about today being the last day, and there's a number of members and staff that are here with me today that all went through 1992 together as we launched the campaign to rebuild South L.A. without problem liquor stores. We're very proud of that work, but we're also very clear that the reason why we were successful in that campaign is because we had a champion in the City Council. But there's another whole role that the Council Office, the staff, and most importantly, the Councilman has played, working in collaboration with community organizations. And that's the obvious one of funding, but the other one is making sure that the community organizations in the district lived up to the standards that have been set by the Council Office and demanding that of all of the organizations. Our specific organization, before he was on the council, when he was at the SCLC, he was our founding Chairman of the Board and helped to establish our first Board of Directors, and has seen us through our 12-year history and played a critical role at every step of our evolution. In 1992, helping us secure our building, and also in 1996, when Congress eliminated our funding, and from the city of L.A., we launched a campaign in Washington that had our funding restored. So we're all real sad to lose the Councilman in his role in City Council, but we also look forward to the evolution of a new relationship as he moves to Sacramento. Many of our issues are taken up on a statewide level, and we look forward to establishing an entire new relationship. So with much affection, sadness, and also congratulations on behalf of Community Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Farnum.
Congratulations to you, Mark, Councilman. First, I want to say thank you for improving the Eighth District. Thank you for inviting me to serve on the Empowerment Congress, the footprint for our new neighborhood councils. Thank you for being a passionate Commissioner, leader, in the search to bring a football team to the rightful home in the Eighth District. Sad news is that we're losing a good Commissioner. The good news is we're going to have a great friend and warrior in Sacramento. But Mark, I have to ask, can I still continue visiting rights with your sons?
Thank you. And the final speaker will be Carolyn Webb-Demasius.
I wanted to take a few moments to say, to make a few comments on behalf of the staff. And I know that the Councilman was going to ask his staff to stand. However, I want to do that because the comments I'm making on behalf of the staff, we have staffers who've been away from City Hall for seven years, one staffer who's here today from seven years ago, and I want to ask Gina to stand. And then I want to ask, she left to go to graduate school but came in today. She's back in Los Angeles. The rest of the staff to stand, if you would, former and current. And Dora, who says that she doesn't like to make speeches, I want you to know, I'm not preempting his current Chief of Staff. We've already talked about this. As staff for Mark Ridley Thomas, one of the things that you learn very quickly is that he's a leader who expects his staff to be out in front of him. And what does that mean? He's got the vision, he's got the energy, he's the propeller, but he wants you to pick up his message and get out in front and make it happen. And so, over the years, all of the fantastic things that he's accomplished, he's accomplished with a group of people who have come from varying walks of life, who have varying skills, but who have all picked up his commitment and accepted the challenge to try to be out in front and get these things done. As Councilwoman Galanter mentioned, the reason he is still here is because the proposition that was going on the ballot to talk about term limits that was written by a group of folk who wanted to limit terms was out there in the universe, and Mark said one day, "I think we ought to rewrite that and do it a little bit better." And we had on our staff at that time an intern who was a graduate student at Cal State L.A., and Mark was able to give this young man a challenge and say, "Do you want to do some work that you can be proud of all of your life?" And the young man, of course, said yes. And he said, "I want you to write this initiative, and I want you to write it," and he began to tell him in what way and in what manner and so forth. And that, in fact, was the one that was adopted by the city of Los Angeles, and that's why he's still here now instead of having left a few years ago. But for that young man, who was an intern in our office for that year, his life's course was changed by that experience. And what I can say to you as a staff person for Mark Ridley Thomas is, all of our lives' courses have been changed by having encountered this young man. I'll say only one other thing, and this is a personal note. The first time I saw Mark, he was on the television, he was the President of SCLC, and he was out at Rancho Los Amigos Hospital talking to janitors who were going on strike because the county was about to contract out those jobs. It happened that my father worked in the housekeeping department at Rancho Los Amigos, was a supervisor out there, and he said, "Look, look, you got to see this guy. He's smart, and he's on our side." And I watched Mark that day, and I heard him and the vocabulary that he used and the passion that he had behind it, and I said, "I've got to know that man." And as they say, the rest is history. And so, Mark, on behalf of your staff from far and wide, current and past, we will continue to work with you, we will consider to be behind you and in front of you, and we wish you Godspeed in this new challenge.
Thank you, Carolyn. And I was in error. The person who really wants to have the last word before the Councilmember, let me recognize Ron Deaton.
No. Okay.
I think... Listening to all this, I've helped oblige all the great things that you've indicated that Mark has done, and I agree with all those. But I think there's a perspective on Mark that I get from time to time, when he calls me at night and on weekends. And it's his devotion to his family, not devotion to the city, that impresses me the most. And it wasn't too awfully long ago, he called, and he's got all these big ideas, as only Mark has, but there's this little noise in the background. And I said, "Mark, Avis has you doing the dishes again, doesn't she?" And it was true. And that's the part that I don't think everybody gets to see, is the family part, and conversations since 1991 he and I've had about raising children, doing so far. Too bad you can't go to Poly, but... But other than that, no, it is the family touch, that part of him that's sensitive to his values, his family, and fitting in the rest of it around those things. He's had some rough times, and devoted himself to that first and the other second. To him, congratulations.
Thank you. And now, the presentation, and then we will hear from Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas.
I guess it's been noted several times now that he's very eloquent, he's very articulate. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Burton. Mr. Burton, he may be a slow talker, but I'll take a slow talker over a fast talker any day. And so now, it is indeed my honor, on behalf of all of your colleagues, Mark, the entire City Council, and the Mayor of Los Angeles, to present you with this resolution, a two-pager, noting all your achievements. And I'll just read the resolve clause here. Now therefore be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council, joined by the Mayor, City Controller, and City Attorney, to hereby express their appreciation to Mark Ridley Thomas for his 11 years of valuable service to the city of Los Angeles and commend him for his efforts to improve the quality of life for constituents in the Eighth District and for his outstanding contributions in ensuring economic and social justice for all Angelinos. Congratulations on your election to the State Assembly, and best wishes for continued success in your future endeavors, certified and adopted today, November 26, 2002.
Call your family up to hold it for you?
to introduce to some and present to others the city's premier mediator, Avis Ridley Some make the point that public life is challenging, it is demanding, and it can take its toll on the family. And many of us know that well. But for the household of Ridley Thomas, let me simply say to you, I am here because of Avis Ridley Thomas. It is not at all lost on me that many of the persons to whom I was being introduced when we were campaigning in late 1990 and through the mid-year of 1991 made it abundantly clear that they didn't care much about the candidate, but his wife brought him over to vote for me, and I'm indeed deeply indebted. And what's wonderful about it is, she hasn't taken it upon herself to routinely remind me of that. She has gone on to distinguish herself, having trained over 1,000 mediators, dispute resolvers in the city of Los Angeles, and from every discipline, every background, multilingual, and in her own right, Avis has made her mark here in the city attorney's office for which the city of Los Angeles is better. I make that remark because many of the ideas that I have advanced were spawned or percolated, if you will, in not extensive conversations. My most incisive critic often makes observations, not lengthy conversations, but when the moment presents itself, and she stands behind me or beside me at this very moment. It was a test of our relationship in 1981, when we were asked at the time to co-host a radio show. Avis and I were co-hosts of a radio show called Movement L.A. on KPFK for five years, drive time on Wednesday afternoon. We did that, and given her propensity to be punctual and my proclivity not to be, let me simply say, driving from 41st and Western to Cowanga Boulevard off of Lancashire was a challenge, and we weathered that. The campaign experience was another opportunity for us, and she soared. There was an attack on my person, not physically, but verbally. As sometimes happens in campaigns, Avis single-handedly cleaned the clock of those other candidates and said, "How dare you attack this man's character and his standing when you know full well you cut your eye teeth on skullduggery." This is a compassionate person, but she is a tough person as well. And so I can talk at length about this journey, and she has overcome rather incredible health challenges. And you see her today fully alive, fully effective, and I'm just grateful to God that she has been able to make her way back to do the things that she does for our family and for many of you, and I want that to be a matter of public record. My grandmother, who is no longer with us, she lived until the age of 98. My grandmother, who is no longer with us, she lived until the age of 98, made it clear that, Mark, you have to give credit where credit is due, and that's why I do so without reservation, in terms of acknowledging the role and contribution of my wife, the most significant of which may very well be a couple of young men who, in 1991, July, wanted to be precise, sat in this pew right here, and had themselves a good time. As I introduced my family, obviously, I was going to introduce Sebastian and Sinclair, and before I could complete their names, they began clapping for themselves. And so we take this opportunity to reintroduce them some 11 and 1/2 years later now, sophomores at Loyola High School and doing their thing in a variety of ways, Sebastian and Sinclair, You have been immensely kind to me today, in a way that has touched my heart. It's overwhelming in some respects. All of us have to come to grips with when we will have to stand here and bid our colleagues, city staff, our constituents a fond farewell. But I want to say that the remarks you've made today have made every single investment that I've made worth it. I began by saying that I had an hour and a half presentation to make when I was first sworn in. Standing right there to your right, Ms. Misakowsky, and then Mayor, the great late Tom Bradley, asked me to raise my right hand. The then late, great Don Ferraro presided. I told the audience I had an hour and a half speech. Mr. Ferraro quickly interrupted and said, "You get five minutes and not a second more." And I tried to govern myself accordingly. But you'll appreciate my remarks then, because they seem to be precisely what I have attempted to say and do. And I quote, "To the extent that powerlessness marks the lives of too many residents of the Eighth District, empowerment is what we will be about. That is what we will engage in." I further offered these insights, that creatively building new coalitions that address this new and emerging reality, this ever-changing city that we call Los Angeles. That, again, marked what I have attempted to do, working on multiracial respect, multiracial understanding, multiracial cooperation. Those things have enjoyed my attention as I called them forward. I said at the time that the issue of police accountability, as it relates to effective law enforcement, will be high on my agenda. I further said there's no way to get around the fact that there is an equally important set of issues related to city services that would be given very, very high priority, because finally, a vigorous pursuit and delivery of those services is what makes accessibility and accountability of my office concrete. And finally, we said July 1, 1991, the matter of community revitalization as it relates to redevelopment, as it relates to economic development, employment opportunities, and finally, community reinvestment, all of those things say to me that we need a revitalized community, and our specific mandate and responsibility is to pursue that with great interest and Mr. Reyes references a article that was written in our bedpiece, May 3, 1991, with the able assistance of a fellow by the name of Fred McFarlane. And Fred, you may recall this, it said, "Let L.A. City Parks ring with cracks of bats and not drug dealings." In that article, we were asked to lay out our agenda, my opponent in the race and myself, and one of my staff people brought this to me just yesterday, and it says, and I quote, "In addition, I will rigorously pursue loan sharks and con artists who thrive on our senior citizens by stealing their homes." These are the things that we talked about then, and the things that I think we have attempted to do. Let me conclude by saying the following. When I joined the Los Angeles City Council in July of 1991, I entered these hallowed halls remotely familiar with the city's processes, but intent on learning as much as possible, so that I could make a real difference in the lives of the 235-plus thousand people who I was elected to represent. Through the years, I have tried to advocate a progressive agenda and keep true to the principles of participatory democracy and creative partnership. The creation of the Eighth District Empowerment Congress, which you all have so eloquently acknowledged as a signature accomplishment of my tenure as the representative for the Eighth District here in our city, improves the following, that engaging, educating, and empowering residents and other stakeholders can be a powerful tool to combating cynicism and apathy in the political process. I believe that my legislative and economic development record will speak for itself. It is a tribute to the longstanding needs of the Eighth District and the tenacity of many of its stakeholders. Whether the issue was the environment or technology, economic development or public safety, I've worked hard to consistently put forth sound public policy, and supported by a host of people. And I want the staff of the Eighth District to stand right there, and come join me right here, Adrian, all of you, just come right here, and the alum, don't be bashful, come right on here, come quickly. Come on down, Leo, come on. These are they who deserve a tremendous amount of credit. They are competent, they are dedicated, and they have weathered many crises, from the civil disturbance of 1992 to the Northridge earthquake of 1994, to the terrorist attacks of the year 2001. And so it is, over the years, there's been laughter and joy, challenges and concessions, heartbreak and victories. And as I take my leave from this body, the Los Angeles City Council, I do so with appreciation for those who continue to give their very best, and with the conviction that public service is indeed an honorable calling. Thank you, and God bless you. And it would only be proper to invite you after we are adjourned to our reception on the fourth floor, where we will be more than glad to not only greet you, but regale you.
Thank you, Mark, for those words from today as well as from 11 years ago. Madam Clerk, what is before us?
The closed session items are still on the desk. Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, let's clear the desk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
All right, if I can have the sergeants take the time to clear the room so we can go into executive sessions, we still have a number of settlement issues with the City Attorney to discuss before we have our break shortly.
Madam Clerk, matter before us, please.
First matter is item 45A, settlement in the case of Mustafa Rez versus the City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of 1.1 million 511,194, plus interest of 188,976.23.
Mr. Pacheco.
The Sewer Construction Maintenance Trust Fund count?
Yes, SCM.
SCM, thank you.
Please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
Next matter is 45C, and that's in the case of Ronald Kotler versus the City of Los Angeles, that's a workers' comp case, and that's 127,500 less permanent disability advances.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next item is 45E, settlement in case of Thomas Granny versus the City of Los Angeles, and that's also a workers' comp case, $220,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
Next matter is settlement, workers' comp case Hinshaw versus the City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of 112,585.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
And 45G is settlement in the case of Glenda versus the City of Los Angeles, and that's also a workers' comp case, the amount is 104,305.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
And that clears the desk.
Just as a reminder, members, all matters approved today by the Council are going forthwith. We have held public comment for today's meeting earlier in the agenda. Are there any announcements at this point? Any further announcements? Adjourning motions, please rise.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to adjourn in memory of William Payne. He passed away this last Saturday after a very long battle with cancer. Bill was born in Oklahoma, but came to California at an early age, growing up in Burbank. He is an alumnus of the United States Maritime Service Officer School, and served in World War II and the Korean War as Lieutenant Commander in the Merchant Marine. He was an employee of the Los Angeles County for over 25 years, where he worked for the Departments of Ways and Measures before becoming investigator in the Coroner's Office, and he retired from there in 1987. He was an avid fly fisherman and an active member of the Long Beach Casting Club. His wife served with me on Gold Shield, which is an alumnus group of UCLA. He was a loyal supporter of UCLA and a proud member of the Chancellor's Associates. So I'd ask that you adjourn in his motion. He is survived by his wife, Ann Payne, his son, Daniel Payne, four brothers, and two sisters. Thank you.
Other tributes? Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Council, would you join me in adjourning in memory of Glenn T. McNamie, who was born in Omaha, Nebraska, on October 29, 1942? He was the only child of Thomas McNamie and Audrey O'Reilly. Mr. McNamie was dedicated to bettering the community and assisting disadvantaged youth. He will be missed by many. He's survived by his sons, Aaron and Thomas. Additionally, Mr. President, members, would you join me in adjourning in memory of Mary Estella Wilkins Persson, the daughter of John Wesley Wilkins, and married and moved to Los Angeles in 1930, and joined the First African Methodist Episcopal Church when it was on 8th and Town. Began a ministry in the community while raising her family. Her ministry included health care, education, assisting families in their attempt to relocate here in Los Angeles in an environment that wasn't particularly hospitable in the 1930s, and was active in all women's groups at the church. Mrs. Persson was a tireless advocate of education as a means of African-Americans enjoying all the benefits of society. She was the matriarch of a family which included educators, judges, doctors, business owners, and lived to see great-grandchildren complete university and post graduate studies. She leaves behind children, great-grandchildren, great-great-grandchildren, a host of cousins, nieces, and nephews, and to continue the legacy of service to God, family, and community. She passed on November 21. Christine and Sylvester Clark, I'd ask that you join me in adjourning in their memory. Christine Clark passed at the age of 78 on Wednesday, November 13. Sylvester passed on November 18, at the age of 85. Mr. and Ms. Clark met in Los Angeles in 1949 and were soon married thereafter. They were faithful members of our local church community and loving parents, and will be missed by everyone who knew them. They are survived by one daughter and four sons. And finally, Mr. President, members of the Council, you may have read today in the open section of the Los Angeles Times about the passing of John Rawls. John Rawls was the towering figure in contemporary philosophical discourse, trained at Princeton, taught at Harvard for some 30 years, wrote a text called "A Theory of Justice." Many of us who have studied philosophical ethics have come to know him as the bridge figure from one tradition to the next. When Bertrand Russell wrote "A History of Western Philosophy," John Rawls would not have been included. That text, when it is to be updated, will no doubt include him, because he is to this generation what persons like Reinhold Niebuhr were to others in his texts, a moral man in immoral society, and what Cornel West is to future generations on questions such as race matters and the like. John Rawls did groundbreaking work, wrote a text that defined our discussion, and many of us talk about justice, and it comes from some of the update of Rawls, with his notion of the veil of ignorance and how we stand in the original position, and much, much more. He will be missed, and it seems to me that it's a fitting departure for myself to acknowledge such a significant intellectual bridge figure as John Rawls.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley-Thomas. Other members, other tributes? Other members, other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.